So, we have a special treat tonight. We're actually going to have the meeting called to order by a student who won the right to have a mayor for the day honor, Reece Delaney. So I'm going to have him actually hit the gavel and call the meeting to order. So that's what you're saying, the meeting is called to order?
Meeting is called to order.
Okay, and hit the gavel. Okay, and you'll show that the council members are all present with the exception of Dave Shuey. So just say everyone, all the members are here except Dave Shuey.
All the members are here except Dave Shuey.
Okay, and then ask the crowd to join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead and say that, yeah, just, "Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance."
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good, good. Okay, and then you'll get us started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's one other thing, sit down here now. Okay, we're moving to the next item, which is the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, that the consent calendar be approved as proposed, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one opposed? So next item is recognitions and presentations. And here I do want to recognize Reece Delaney, and we'll come out in front here. Let's come out in front, so you can see your Reece. So there was a fundraiser auction at the local elementary school, and Reece's family won the honor of being mayor for the day, so they chose him as a representative, and he met me at the city hall this afternoon, and we toured city hall, and he got to meet all of the department heads and find out how our city operates, and got a few mementos, even went past the police department, and met the police officers that were there, and the chief of police, and got some things from the police department as well. So that was a nice introduction for Reece to how the city of Clayton operates, and a tour of the city hall as well. So part of the award that his family won on his behalf is that he would be mayor for the day, and we want to give him now a certificate of recognition for his scrapbook, and it reads, "Mayor for the day, Reece Delaney," this is to certify, "that Reece Delaney was honorably served as mayor for a night and successfully led the Clayton City Council in opening the meeting and leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Therefore, I, Keith Hayden, Mayor of Clayton, do hereby declare Wednesday, November 21st, 2018, as Reece Delaney Day in Clayton." Very proud to do that, so Reece, this is yours. I'm actually going to ask the city council to come up, you're going to want a group picture with Reece, Jim, everyone here will join you. You'll be in the middle now because there's just the four of us. Can someone else take the picture so Julie can join us? Very good, very good, well, this is your special day. Did you want to say anything, or? Okay, he did have a nice tour, he asked a lot of nice questions of the department heads, and his father Lawrence joined us as well. So it was a very nice day, and I certainly enjoyed getting to know him as well, so thanks for coming to visit us, all right? Very nice, thank you.
Way to go, Janet.
Thank you.
All right, next item then would be reports, and we do have a report planning commission, Bill Gahl.
We do. Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, council members, city staff. My name is Bill Gahl, and I'm one of the commissioners on our planning commission. We met last Thursday, or, excuse me, last Tuesday, and came before us was a request by the applicant, it was Mr. Aaron Kalt, K-A-L-T, who resides at 199 Monter Parkway in Dana Hills, which is on the corner of Monter Parkway and Wilson Way, if you may be familiar with it. The request was to approve a site plan review permit to allow a previously constructed retaining wall, which is located in the city's right-of-way, and that's the area between inside of the sidewalk to the property line. Well, as a little background, I think this has been going on for about a year, and this retaining wall was just part of a much larger project, there was a fence that was constructed along that exterior property line, and Mr. Kalt had worked very, very diligently with the city staff to resolve all the issues that were facing him and the city, and he spent a considerable amount of money and time in trying to resolve these issues, and the city was very, very receptive to working with him and patient with him, and finally all those CMC issues were all resolved. And so the only thing that remains is this issue with the retaining wall. It's about 41 feet, or, excuse me, 41 feet, it's about 41 inches high and approximately 88 inches in length, and so it runs that whole length of the, that borders and that faces Wilson, Mount Wilson Way. The only problem is, is that as constructed, it encroaches upon the right-of-way, that five-foot right-of-way, and so it encroaches about roughly 2.7 feet into the right-of-way. So the staff reviewed the situation, and it was actually discussed with the city council, the city engineer, and the city attorney, I think that was last, I think it was last November, 2018, and the city council subsequently directed that the encroachment could be, could occur, I should say, in this instance, however, future encroachments such as this would be denied. You might remember that, but, so the staff, upon direction of the city council, continued their investigation, and they resulted in requiring that the applicant, Mr. Kalt, agree to a, an encroachment agreement with the city, which requires the applicant to secure an insurance policy at no cost to the city, covering the city of Clayton as additionally insured. I understand that that application, or the applicant, has agreed to all those conditions. And so the planning commission, last Tuesday, voted 4-0 to approve the site plan review permit as conditioned. I have some pictures here if you'd like to see that, that property on Monter Parkway, but it was a fairly forward approach. I'm not quite sure why this was not all taken care of last year, but, and how this was discovered, but again, it's the only remaining piece in this project, and if you look at it, I mean, I've been to the property twice now and looked at it, and in one, you know, you can say in one case it, it removes some of that open area that, this five-foot area that's not maintained and looks unsightly, and so it'll, it'll obscure some of that anyway, but I don't, I don't really think there's, I mean, the land is fairly flat, and so I don't think there's anything involved in, you know, any kind of landslide or anything like that, so. So we voted 4-0 to recommend to you to approve that site plan review, and if you have any other question, or any questions, I'll be glad to address them to you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Gahl, I'm sure the neighbors are going to be glad this project finally gets completed.
That's a wonderful point, Mr. Mayor, in fact, there were a number of people who did show up for the meeting last Tuesday. All were very, very enthusiastic about Mr. Kalt's involvement in the neighborhood, and what a great neighbor he is, and yes, I think they're all wishing that this could come to a successful conclusion, and again, you know, and he has, Mr. Kalt, that is, has paid for this insurance policy out of his own pocket, and rightly so, I think, and so I think it's going to come to a very, very satisfactory conclusion for everybody, and I hope you'll approve that.
Good, good news, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? Julie?
Yeah, my only question is to staff, do we know when this comes forward, or if this actually comes forward? It's a, it's a use permit that was granted by the planning commission, so that's the end of the line for that.
Unless appealed.
Yes, unless it's appealed by one of the neighbors. And so just to clarify your statement, I think this is about a three-and-a-half-foot high retaining wall, and it's 88 feet long, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and it was before us a year ago in 2017?
Yeah.
And we required that, and just for, again, another question of staff, just to clarify so that any public watching understand, the applicant was required to provide this insurance policy, holding the city harmless, and if I remember correctly, and I need clarification from you, we also require this be recorded against the property, so any future owner would also be required to have that insurance property, policy, or no?
I know that the insurance policy is a requirement, I'm not sure it's recorded, and I'll let our community development director, but in addition to the insurance requirement, there's also indemnification provision.
Right, right, but I couldn't remember whether we required that to be recorded on the property, because it's not like somebody is going to buy it in the future and then be not liable for it.
I'll let Ms. Gentry.
Okay, thank you.
Oh.
To clarify, the encroachment agreement is not required to be recorded on the property, however, the site plan review permit that is approved by the planning commission runs in perpetuity as long as that wall is there, so that will be impermanence.
So is that something that has to be disclosed to a potential buyer?
No, not as part of a real estate transaction.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, good, we're all anxious to wrap that up, appreciate it. All right, apparently we had no Trails Landscape Committee meeting, so city staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We had an election, and the, for all intents and purposes, the general municipal election is over, we just don't know the final results. However, as of this point in time, out of the 8,017 registered voters in Clayton, there have been 5,604 that have cast ballots, which is a, right now at this point, a 69.9% turnout. That's a little low for Clayton, actually, oftentimes we march up into the 70%, which indicates, and is consistent with the county elections office, that there are still ballots out there to be counted. However, at this point in time, in first place, and there's seats up for two, in first place is Mr. Jeff Wan, in second place is Carl C.W. Wolf, Vice Mayor Shuey is in third place, and Mr. Bedell, Brian Bedell, is in fourth place. However, for those, obviously, there's some of the differences or increments between the candidates are fairly marginal, and so we don't know how many ballots out there are for Clayton as yet, so we encourage everyone who is interested to continue to go to the Cocoa County website, they're on vote, and we are anticipating that the county election officer will have another update by 5:00 PM tomorrow, and that's on November 21st, by 5:00 PM. And the last two times when we've been told that, the uploads have occurred early in the afternoon, we do not as a city receive any special notification, so we, like anybody else, will be researching or watching the website for those updates. Based upon that update, it probably will give us an idea of how that ranking might complete, and then our next meeting, which is December 4th, we'll look to have our reorganization meeting. December 4th is a Tuesday, which is also the same, meaning that the board of supervisors meets during the day, and the board of supervisors, since we have tendered the election to them, they must officially approve the outcomes and can, and also the county elections officer's canvassing of the vote. When that takes place, we will then receive that outcome on Tuesday, and we'll bench the final numbers for that meeting Tuesday night. However, for those that are likely to be seated, please prepare to be ready that night for the final results, bring family if it's, you're interested in doing that, that meeting is typically what we call a light meeting, where not much is handled in terms of the consent calendar, don't have any action items, we typically will have a cake, and it'll get a chance for people to, you know, welcome the new city council members, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Good, now, I believe you said that you, the city will be posting this updated vote results on the city website?
No, I didn't say that, but they are right now posted on the city website, and depending upon what time the county election officer releases those, city hall closes at 5 o'clock, so if it's after 5 o'clock, then we won't have an opportunity to update those. If it's, you know, reasonably before that time period, we'll do our best to upload that, there are many individuals who are, won't be in city hall tomorrow, including some of those who will be in charge of uploading those.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that's what I meant, I thought there was an indication earlier today that we would post that on our city website to make it easy, so thank you.
Well, we will, depending, you know, it's either tomorrow, or it could be Monday, but people can get the results on their own.
Okay.
And right now, the votes that I talked about here are posted on the city's website.
Okay, thank you. Next up then would be the city council report, and these are the reports of the city council members on what they have done representing Clayton since our last city council meeting, so, Councilmember Catalano?
So I attended the Clayton Community Library Foundation Board meeting on October 17th, and then on November 1st, I participated together with the mayor in the audit subcommittee meeting, which is also on our agenda for tonight, that's it.
Okay, Councilmember Pierce?
Sure, I'll try to be quick, we had several Metropolitan Transportation Commission meetings, including some special meetings on, for the executive director selection committee on which I serve as the representative from ABAG, we are searching for a new executive director, the director who has been there for the last 17 years is retiring the end of February, so we are doing an extensive search and have got applicants from all over the United States who have applied, so we are in the process of narrowing that list. Also had a meeting of the committee to house the Bay Area, which is looking at, it's a public-private kind of committee that's looking at solutions to help alleviate the housing crisis in the Bay Area and seeing what we can do there. Also attended the Focus on the Future Conference, Transportation Conference, this is a group that's, meets every year, and it's a group of the self-help transportation counties, so like Contra Costa that has a half-cent sales tax or, or more to support transportation projects in each county, and we meet annually to see what the newest and best projects are. Attended the mayor's conference in Arinda, where the topic was the county's new re-entry program. Attended the board meeting for the California Association of Councils of Government, which is all of the groups like ABAG and, and all of the regional transportation planning agencies like CCTA, where they get together for meetings. We had several Association of Bay Area Government meetings, and a Contra Costa Transportation Authority meeting, the news there is we're trying to schedule with all the parties necessary for a groundbreaking for the 684 interchange project, which will widen Highway 4 from Morello to 242, and, and improve the access there, so this is a project we've been working on for a long time, it looks like we're going to be early to mid-December for that. At this point, we have awarded the contract, we're just trying to get the groundbreaking set. And attended a Bay Area Regional Collaborative meeting as well, that's it.
Councilmember Diaz?
Thank you. Been a busy couple of weeks, starting with the, on the 25th, the CBCA General Membership Meeting, which I attended, then followed that by the beginnings of planning meetings of the 10th Annual Clayton BBQ Meeting, which is going to be a great event. On Tuesday, the 30th of October, I had the honor of chairing the 25th Annual Chief Special Agents Association Law Enforcement Appreciation Luncheon, we presented awards to 19 various law enforcement individuals throughout the greater Bay Area, including Santa Clara County, San Mateo County, Marin, San Francisco, Oakland, and so forth, including Danville and so on, it was a great event, we were, we hosted it over in Danville, and we were welcomed by Vice Mayor Robert Storer, who did an excellent job in, in doing that. I too attended the mayor's conference over in Arinda, but I had the opportunity later that evening to sit and meet for about an hour or so with the director and the assistant director, or deputy director, of the so-called re-entry program, and got some really good information, and we're going to have a follow-up meeting, so I will become more well-informed, then I can share that with everyone on how that, how they view it, and how it's going to work, and what support they can provide in the future. Sixth election night, our meeting suddenly got canceled, so that gave me the opportunity to attend a number of election events throughout the county, and a number of our constituents who, or not constituents, but our colleagues that chair and are either mayors or vice-mayors of other cities, I went to several of their events, and it was very, very well-attended throughout the, throughout the county. On the 7th, I attended the Contra Costa Water District Board meeting, and that was a very interesting meeting, it went a little bit longer than usual, they had two major projects that they had to go through because they expended, authorized the expenditure of a number of millions of dollars to do a number of major projects specifically for the reservoir that is providing a lot of water to the area, very interesting, and they had to go through a lot of detail, so that this as a public hearing, they presented a lot of great facts, and I can share those later with everyone. On the 11th of November, Sunday, I attended the Clayton Concord Veterans Day Ceremony, a little bit lighter attended this year, for whatever reason, I'm sure a lot of it was due to the air quality and the coolness of that Sunday morning, but it was a very worthwhile event. On the 13th, I had to step in due to the designated chair of the Art and Wine Committee had some health issues with a family member, and so we were getting ready for a very well-planned art and wine festival over the 28th and 29th of April of 2019, so look for more to that to come. Again, another CBCA General Membership Meeting, I attended Saturday the 17th, we decorated downtown, in case you hadn't noticed, the Christmas tree is up, getting ready to be lit on the 1st of December, all of the, the decorations are up, including all of the various Reece on all of the businesses, that's all done, and it looks great, and the committee chair provided everybody with an N25 mask, so we could breathe while we were out there, but it really wasn't that bad, the air quality wasn't that terribly bad on, on Sunday. Then again, we had another barbecue meeting on the 19th as well, I happened to be fortunate to head downtown, had to go take care of some things at the CBCA shed, and lo and behold, our city engineer was personally supervising the restriping of that city parking lot out there, it looks fantastic, and it was going on from about 5 until, I don't know, 6 plus 30, with him personally supervising, I really commend Scott Almond on that, and the team he brought in there to, to make that happen. Earlier this evening, I was out in Oakley and attended the retirement event for former Clayton Chief of Police, but current Oakley Chief of Police, who's retiring after 32 years of law enforcement, Chris Thorson, it was a great, well-attended event, probably still going on right now, but we had to get back here for the, for our city council meeting. That's all I have, thank you.
Good, yes, it does sound like you're quite busy, Jim. I had a few things to keep me busy as well, starting with the Arinda Mayor's Conference, and did find out more about this re-entry program that the county is sponsoring, and it sounds very interesting, so we'll be hearing more about that. Then on November 2nd, attended the County Connection Operations and Scheduling Subcommittee, and heard quite a bit about their plans for putting out a new RFP for the paratransit services, so that is expected to improve those services with much better on-time performance. Also had information on drug testing program that is actually being required throughout the country, really, on all mass transit services, and we are going to be one of the few that is out in front of that, and is going to have this drug testing requirements met much earlier than most cities are going to be able to do. Then on November 11th, I did speak at the combined Concord and Clayton VFW ceremony for the Veterans Day, again, as Jim indicated, it wasn't quite as heavily attended as in the past, but we did think it had to do with the air quality. Then on November 12th, we had the Oktoberfest Committee wrap-up meeting, and again, a very successful event, raised a lot of money for local projects and schools, scholarship programs, and that again is sponsored by the CBCA. And then on Wednesday, November 14th, spoke at a Blue Star Moms dedication for a new memorial, and this one was at the Olympic High School to honor two fallen heroes, stepped in late for the Clayton, excuse me, for the Concord mayor on that, and spoke in honor of those that were fallen, there were two former students that attended Olympic High School, PFC Scott Barrett and PFC Ben Zeski, and both of them were honored, a very memorable memorial service for them, and then unveiled the actual monument, and the Blue Star Moms are being very successful on their program to erect monuments at local area high schools that have lost former students to the armed services, and they're just about complete, every high school has had fallen heroes that attended their schools, so they're all being recognized with memorials, and it's very moving to attend those, and, and the students also, kind of raises the significance of the sacrifice of these fallen heroes and veterans who we've lost. Then on Thursday, November 15th, attended the actual board meeting for the County Connection, where the actual full presentation for the paratransit RFP and drug testing programs were presented to the whole board, also attended the November meeting for CBCA last Thursday. On Monday, we had another follow-up meeting for the barbecue cook-off that's planned for July 13th here in Clayton, that's becoming quite a big event, and then today, did get to conduct the Reece Delaney Day here in Clayton, and got to take that young man and his father Lawrence on a tour of the city hall, and meeting all the department heads and so forth, so that was very rewarding, and particularly because the young man Reece indicated that they are teaching government now, and they do have student government, even at the elementary level. At third grade, he was aware of student government activities that are underway at the elementary school, so I was glad to see that getting started very young, and he, as a result, he had some good questions, so, you see, all of us do have quite a few activities between our council meetings, we really enjoy representing Clayton. So next up on the agenda then would be public comment, and this is for non-agenda items, any of those that are scheduled for action items, we do. we do offer a public comment. So these are for items that are not on tonight's agenda. And I do have one speaker card for Ann Stanaway.
Thank you, Council. My name is Ann Stanaway. I'm at 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton, California. A rogue homeowners association within the city of Clayton is in the process of adopting rules that threaten public safety. Yes, under the leadership of Mayor Hayden, also President of the Board of Directors of the Westwood Property Owners Association. The directors of that association, otherwise known as the West Wooden Heads, have proposed a set of what amounts to backdoor amendments to Westwood's charter in violation of its obligations to public safety. Indeed, the Westwood Property Owners Association was founded in 1984 on the strength of promises reiterated now in Article III of Westwood's restated declaration in 2015. Purpose and power of the association. The primary purposes include to provide for and promote safety, welfare, and interests of all owners of property and residents within the described property. To that end, throughout its over 30 years of operation, the Westwood Property Owners Association has continued to give its directorship the power to enforce local ordinances, statutes, and other governmental regulations. I refer you to Section 10.2 of its CCRs. Violation of law. Any violation of a state, municipal, or local law ordinance or regulation pertaining to the ownership, occupation, or use of any property within the project is hereby declared to be a violation of this declaration and subject to any and all of the enforcement procedures set forth herein. The new parking rules, set for approval in 30 days, seek to nullify Westwood Property Owners Association's promise to work in partnership with the city in lawful and responsible governance. Mr. Hayden and the Board of the Westwood Property Owners Association will adopt these rules without public recordation or notice. I know about this travesty only because I am a member of Westwood and have received the proposal 30 days in advance of its adoption. Embarrassing as it is to admit my association with such a short-sighted homeowners association, I now feel it is my duty to inform the city of Westwood's intentions and try to enlist the support of local law enforcement. Please enforce the fire code. City ticketing and towing in Westwood will keep the streets clear for police, ambulance, fire, and other emergency services when the need arises. Beware, Clayton could easily become the next paradise if the city does not take its own steps to protect the residents and business owners against lawless practices in Westwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't have any other speaker cards? Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing no one, we're going to close this off and go to our action items. So, excuse me, to public hearings, we have none scheduled. So move on to action items. And 8A is presentation approval of the city's audited comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, by Cropper Accountancy Corporation, an independent certified public accountant firm. This presentation will be led by our finance manager, Kevin Mizuno. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor Hayden. So prior to this meeting, staff met with the staff and the independent auditors. Cropper Accountancy Corp. met with the audit subcommittee, yourself and Councilmember Catalano. And the auditors had an opportunity to present the results of their audit, which is required, a required step, which I'm sure they will discuss in their presentation in accordance with SaaS. I'll let you know when you're ready. I just wanted to provide a brief introduction to the audit before I pass it on. So the city is receiving an unmodified or clean opinion for the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018. Bear with me, there's a lot of acronyms, as everyone's aware of. And I'll define them first before I go and sing along with the acronyms. So this is always the goal of management. And that means that the in-house prepared CAFER is fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP, which is Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. So the audit was performed by Cropper Accountancy Corp., a qualified independent auditing firm. And it was prepared in accordance with Generally Accepted Auditing Standards, or GAAS, issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as the Comptroller General of the United States. So in the introductory section of the CAFER is the Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting Excellence, which is issued to the city by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, for the prior-year CAFER for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2017. So for this year, management does intend to submit the current-year CAFER to the GFOA for the same award, for hopeful approval of that award. And we do anticipate that we will receive that for the third consecutive year. And we expect that those results would be released by the GFOA in the spring of 2019. And there will be a publication and a letter submitted to the attention of the city manager. And we can provide an update at that time, crossing our fingers that we do obtain that. So without taking too much of the auditor's thunder, because they do have a detailed presentation, I just wanted to summarize two important matters that they're going to discuss to give you a little bit more background. So this year, the city implemented a new accounting standard called, well, GASB 75, which pertains to the reporting of other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. So OPEB was previously tracked by the city and all other cities that have that and reported in the government-wide financial statements, as well as in the footnotes, in accordance with GASB 45, which has now been superseded and replaced. Although it continues to be management's opinion that the city does not have a real OPEB plan, which the statement was intended to address, an unfunded liability has always been reported since we do not have an irrevocable trust. Management continues, is continuously considering the option to open an irrevocable trust. However, at this time, it's still not, it has not been recommended to the city manager or the city council because it's just not, doesn't seem like a good use of funds based on the small size of our plan. And we don't really feel it's a real plan as described by this accounting standard. So this new standard, just like GASB 68, which was previously issued for pensions, ultimately resulted in a prior period adjustment to implement the standard to reduce the beginning net position of the government-wide financial statements, which the auditors are going to discuss in a separate slide coming up. The second item I wanted to discuss was the status of the general fund. So consistent with our predictions in the adopted budget for fiscal year 2019, the CAFER reports a reduction in general fund reserves necessary to address the non-operational and non-recurring projects approved by the city council using excess reserves reported in the three previous fiscal years, which is fiscal year 2015, FY16, and FY17. So despite this planned reduction in general fund excess reserves, after we back out the $432,309 in expenditures that pertain to these one-time uses of general fund earmarks, it results in an operating surplus of $181,500 for fiscal year 2018. So as outlined on page 23 of the CAFER, the unspent balance of earmarks of general fund excess reserves approved by the city council previously is $281,930 as of June 30th of 2018. And that is reported as assigned in accordance with GASB 54, which regulates how fund balance is to be reported. Also on that same page, 23 of the CAFER, unassigned reserves of the general fund are $5,302,751 as of June 30th, 2018, which is approximately 1.15 times the size of the adopted fiscal year 2019 operating budget, which is a very positive indicator of fiscal health for the city. And I would say higher than most cities of our neighboring cities. So with that being said, I'd like to pass the matter on to Mr. John Cropper, audit partner for Cropper Accountancy Corp. And I will also pass you this nifty device to...
We can operate.
Yeah, so you can operate your slideshow. I'll put you on the device to get the different slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. That was a good job. I understood it all. Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to primarily answer any questions that the council or others may have. We've enjoyed this audit. It's been a wonderful audit, which I'll talk briefly about, the results of what we have for you tonight. And say, I'd like to just add to that that working with Kevin Mizuno, your finance manager, is a pleasure. He was very subtle, but he said, "in-house prepared CAFER." That is progress. And the staff should be proud. That's, you know, I know Bryce, our manager on this engagement, worked hard, but Kevin was amazing. With that, we have, to keep me focused, we'll have a brief slideshow Bryce will put up here. The first and most important thing, the council hires us for what's on page one. And you hope that you're going to hear your auditors say, "unmodified audit opinion." And that's what, of course, we have. There's another opinion on our letterhead way down in there on page 157 of the CAFER, talking about internal controls over compliance and other matters. When you read through that, you will see that we are not issuing an audit opinion on internal controls of the town or compliance. But we can say, because part of what we do in the audit process is we test things. And we can say that the controls, the procedures are functioning well. We had no material weaknesses that we could find, and we weren't looking for them. But in the process of our audit planning, where we look at risk and test, we would probably discover any material weaknesses. So we can comfortably say we don't have any here at the town. Can't quite say that about significant deficiencies, but we had none to report. And then we are proud to say that there was a very good tone, starting with staff at the top, actually with the council, going all the way down through your city manager, Napper. And it's a pleasure to have that feeling as an auditor. You know, we're coming out at interim. We're looking around. We're feeling, we've been the auditors here for a couple of years now. And we're always looking for the little things. And the tone that's set there shows integrity. And all the things I was seeing that do the right thing down here. I love that. Okay, so enough of that. Noteworthy items. If you look at your page 17, you know, CAFER is not easy to understand because you've got essentially two balance sheets and you've got essentially two profit and loss statements. We call them different things. This, the statement of net position on page 17 encompasses the full economic power of the city. So it's a little different, this balance sheet, than what you'll see on the governmental funds because it includes all your debt, all your fixed assets. You can see here, you have a little over 50 million in assets and the liability is a little over 6. The assets less the liabilities is your net position. You can see it's almost 46 million. If I were a citizen of this town, this city, I would focus a little bit on the unrestricted net position of 3.761 million. I think that's a key number because it's available. And you can see during the year, on a governmental, government-wide basis, you actually increased your net position by almost 230,000, 229,000. So that's that first area there. Kevin mentioned two issues. The accounting profession has changed amazingly with pensions and OPEB, these retirement plans, or retirement plans for medical, as well as their pensions. It's kind of given the valuation experts quite a bit of say as to what some of the numbers are going to be. And so you've heard about the pensions in the news. That was GASB 68. Then this year, GASB 75 that Kevin mentioned kicked in. And when I say kicked in, it never, it really was not accounted for properly under GASB 45. You had a note that told you how much you probably owed. And like Kevin said, it's not a big, big deal for this small city, but for others, it is. You can see here, we've got the net pension liability going up by $488,000. Calpers did great this year. Apparently, they made about, in the measurement period, which was June 30th, 2017. That's a year ago because it's got a different measurement period in these financials. They got 11.2%. And that's great. And you would think that that would drive down what you would see. You would think that liability would go down. But as you know, and you've seen it in the news because everybody's concerned with it, they have, one of the actuarial assumptions is that they're going to make 7.5%. Well, they've lowered that to 7%. And there's an administrative 0.15% on there. So because they do that, when they lower that, it creates a bigger liability. So you have two conflicting things going on this year, which net out to a $488,000 increase in the pension liability. The OPEB, that one on the books, you can see that in your slides if you take a peek on, I think it's page, well, page 17 and 18 is really where I'm speaking of. But it's a new, it's a new pronouncement. Couple of years ago, we didn't have that. We didn't provide. We paid. The finance department would get a bill from Calpers, and they'd pay it. And that would be it. You know, the assumption was that you were okay on your pension. And they didn't, of course, do that for the OPEB. But other finance directors kind of knew it was pay-as-you-go and that someday it was going to hit the fan, right? So this is a good thing. It's a great idea to provide for these pensions. It's a little expensive right now, but it'll level off in the future. We'll take a little bit of a look, see here. There were other, in addition to 68, there were other GASBs that were necessary to be able to prepare for GASB 68. We've talked about it in the prior years, but you can see deferred outflows. They came up with that terminology, deferred inflows. I kind of say deferred inflows are like liabilities and deferred outflows are like assets. If you were to go in your notes, you could see more information about what's making up your deferred outflows, which is an asset of 1.7. But it largely, it contains all the monies that were paid during the fiscal year from July 1, 2017 to 6/30/2018 because it's not counted by the actuary yet. And there's other things showing that they did very well on the assumptions so far as the investments. So that, you know, that makes up a lot of that. And if I can draw your attention to little bullets down low, you'll see the discount rate is now 7.15. Last year, it was 7.65. So it's coming down. Hopefully, it'll continue to go because I'm not sure that anybody's getting that much over 30 years. But that's what they think.
And just to chime in there to help you out with one clarification item. The discount rate for GASB, financial reporting purposes, as you can see, 7.15, you're not probably as familiar with because the discount rate for financial reporting is actually a little bit different than that for the funding actuaries. So it was in the newspapers and when Calpers publishes their return annually, they actually used to use a 7.5% benchmark, which then was reduced a half a percent to 7%, smoothed over three years, starting with this fiscal year. And actually, on a financial reporting perspective, it was originally 7.65. Then was reduced to 7.15 because... to 7.15, because the reporting standards require that you have, I think administrative fees are included in that. So just in case anybody was wondering about that.
Yeah, the discount rates. And then we've got the investment returns, so those two things going on, as we talked about a little bit before. And then you can see the contributions this year were, you know, and that of $210,000 were, but you can see all that in the notes if you go to page 71. Bryce, we can go to the next one. 68, we've talked about it in prior years. It's good to kind of revisit, you know, the timing differences of deferred inflows and outflows. That same model was being used to do 75. And so we have deferred inflows and deferred outflows. If you can look at the column that says 2017, what you'll see is a couple spaces where there was nothing. And the reason there wasn't anything is because this is a new pronouncement. 45 was far different. GASB 45 dealt with this before. And you could actually overpay and have an asset for OPEBs on it. You know, under 45 is just crazy, so we won't even talk about that. But the reality is, now you've got a prior period adjustment that is using a discount rate. You can see it's a little different discount rate, because you've got, you don't have to, you're not using CalPERS and their criteria. And so the contributions in 18 were a little over $11,000. All right, so if there's no questions on this type of thing, which is, we talked quite a bit about it in the subcommittee, we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. During the audit, we start off with an engagement letter, try and set the terms. The end of the audit, we try and remind management, hey, did you tell us everything? You know, are there any cases going on that need to be accrued with attorneys or what have you? And then we always like for the council to be aware of the required 114 letter, the communication with those charged with governance. In this, it's pretty much a template, I say that, but we go over sensitive estimates, and GASB 68 and 75 are the two that we really, you know, we've got a lot of actuarial assumptions, and some of those are changing, and some of those are not necessarily true. I mean, you can look at them and see if you agree. Then also, we've also got, one other thing we pointed out, a GASB 72 thing, where we want to record all the investments at fair value. And Level 1, 2, and 3 is defined in your footnotes, but those are important. The profession is going very heavily towards fair value, and we do the best that we can. Sometimes Level 3, when you don't have something, it's not a stock that's being traded every day, it's a piece of property that you don't know what the value is on it, it can get harder. And so we want to draw that out. And the final thing, with the indents on the disclosure, sensitive disclosures, Note 11 and 12, which do talk about pension and OPEB. We didn't have any issues with some of the other things that are listed there in italics, you know? And we have all our adjustments that we have done, which largely are related to some of the areas we've discussed tonight, or just simply client accommodation entries. So we were not required to issue a management letter because our audit went so well. So we'll leave it at that. We're happy to talk about any of the audit phases. You know, we've got three audit phases.
Can I ask, sorry to interrupt, but, so can you just, on the last point you made about the fact that you did not issue a management letter, can you talk a little bit more about that? It doesn't mean a negative, it actually means a positive.
Yes. You know, it's interesting, we have some clients that love it when the auditor gives them a management letter. And we think it's very good constructive information, because it makes next year's audit better, or it could make next year's audit run smoother, and it's good for everybody to be on the same page. You have a finance manager that happens to be an ex-auditor. He has, for the past three years, how long have you been here, Kevin?
Been what?
How long have you been working at this city?
Almost five.
Five years, okay, time flies, okay. He has been cinching down, because you're a small city, and we often see segregation of duties as an issue, where we try and take, you know, whoever's recording in the general ledger, and whoever can authorize transactions, or whoever is reconciling, we try and make sure those three things are separated, and where can we do mitigation? That's all kind of happened. We don't have any great ideas so far as segregation of duties. We didn't have a journal entry this year that was material. If we had a material journal entry, it would be a symptom of something else, and we would try and drill down and report to the council what was the reason behind that big journal entry, or material journal entry. And what is material? Materiality is what the average reader of the financial statement would think is a big deal. So if you're looking at your government-wide, where you have a balance sheet with, you know, you're looking at capital assets that you can't necessarily sell, but it raises maybe your materiality. But if you go to your governmental fund, you can see there's major funds there, okay? What page was that? You have not, the general fund has to be, have its own materiality, and we treat it that way. But on that page, I think it's 17 and 18, you, oh no, that's the government one, the page 23 and 24, you'll see you have other major funds. There's the landscape maintenance district, the successor housing agency, the capital project, or capital improvement program, and then the other governmental funds. Each one of those separate units, and I'll say columns here, it's a major fund, and it has its own materiality. And what that means is, if you're looking at that one fund, it's far different from what you see on page 17 and 18, where we have a bigger materiality. This is where the nuts and the bolts are. This is where we're really auditing. And so we're trying to find things that we consider risks that could happen. And so we address our audit plan based on those material columns that you see on 23 and 24, if that makes sense, and also on the revenue side on the next two pages, three pages. So I don't know if I went too long on that, but does that help?
Yep.
Okay.
Also, when you first started, the very first point that you made, the unmodified audit results and opinion.
Yes.
I asked for clarification on that, and what that meant to me was that, as you looked through and went down into the details that backed up the financial statement and the summaries.
Yes.
You found no reason to make any changes at all to those financial records.
Well, in your, in your...
That's why it's unmodified.
That's true. Unmodified opinion. If you look at your SaaS 114 letter, you'll see there were adjustments or accommodating entries that happened, that we, in our judgment, are saying, these are standard, these are okay, we understand why we had these. Sometimes it's, we get a trial balance a little early, and then, you know, Kevin will come and say, hey, can you, here's something for you. It's not that we found it. But you'll see in the actual first paragraph of our opinion on page 1, where it says, "We have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund," which I tried to point out, "and the aggregate remaining information of the city." So that's where we're delineating out exactly what we're kind of doing. We're saying in our opinion, then we say, management's responsibilities, auditor's responsibilities, our opinion, and then other matters have some of the information that talks about required supplementary information that you'll find in there, and other things that are probably pretty detailed for this setting. So I just, Bryce, if you just go back to the audit, one more. The audit phases, we've got the planning, we've got the fieldwork, we've got the audit report phase. It's kind of interesting, we confirm with the county, we confirm with the state, we confirm like 90% of your revenues. That's kind of unusual for an audit. Should make you feel pretty good. And then there's other things, like, you know, you get permit monies and things like that. But we test those controls around that. So, you know, it's one of those things, if an auditor's been around, and they have a good feel for what they're going to see, their planning process with time becomes a little bit more detailed. And to not have a management letter from an auditor who's been here six years, or I'm not sure, for a couple of years now, it should be comforting to the city to have this kind of a report. And the auditors that have been on the city have also, Bryce has been here for a couple of years as the manager, and I've been here as the partner a couple of years. So the continuity in the, you know, institutionalized knowledge is another factor that is good. There's also that other side where, you know, councils go, well, okay, is it time that we get new eyes, or we get new, you know, sometimes the SEC has kind of come up with some guidelines that are happening there with Sarbanes-Oxley, and they're saying, okay, well, you should switch partners, or audit partners, or things like that. So those kinds of things are good, but if it ain't broke, you know, don't fix it kind of thing, too. So I think, Bryce, we can just flash the last two. This is kind of a simplified version of the government-wide. You can see the net change of the 228, I guess, 229, we rounded it. Last year was a little higher. The prior period adjustment you see for this OPEB affects it a little bit negatively to the 321,000. You can see there the increase in the pension expense and authorization uses of excess reserves. Kevin spoke to those. And then on the next one, the general fund, you guys, you guys, the council has a budget, and this is always where the general fund, you know where all those go. Your city manager is very into the numbers. I work with a lot of city managers. I'm impressed when he tells me, here's where we are, and I am wondering why I'm off this, you know, why are we, why do we have a change in fund? He knows. He already knows before we go into the meeting on the subcommittee. And he hates it. He does not like to see a negative, even though that's not the purpose of government. Government is supposed to spend what it gets. And you can see you had 299 last year that you added on the general fund. This year, 250,000 to the negative. But there was a good reason for that, and he knows the reason. It's because you did well in prior years, and you were spending it down, because you don't have a policy of encumbrances here. So I am probably signing a little bit too, I don't know, I think it's okay to say, when you're doing good, you're doing good, because I sometimes have the displeasure of presenting pretty hefty management letters. So we're here, if you have questions. With that, I'll just conclude.
Question? Jim? Julie?
No, just a comment. Thank you, and it's always nice to receive a report like this. I have served on a couple of other agencies in the past, not currently, that have had hefty management letters, and that's no fun. So this is wonderful to hear, and yes, we know we have a wonderful city manager and a brilliant finance manager as well, and that's very helpful. But getting confirmation independently is always a good thing.
Yes.
For the public and certainly for the council.
I agree. To you?
I don't have any questions either, I just want to thank you. We spent a couple hours in the subcommittee answering my and the mayor's very mundane and detailed questions, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for serving.
Yep.
Yeah, that was a long meeting for everybody.
Well, so I want to close off by thanking you very much. I learn more every time we do this.
Sure.
When we really get down to the numbers, but it's comforting that you explain everything and are satisfied that the financial records are accurate, so that we're basing our decisions on accurate information.
You sure are.
And the public can rely on that as well. So it's always good to get those reports, and we appreciate also your recommendation for the staff work that's being done here in Clayton. Commendation certainly is deserved, so we appreciate it.
Definitely, yeah.
All right?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you may have some questions here, but for now, that's...
I'll sit down then.
Okay. Kevin, did you want to add anything more to...
No, just thank you to all the time spent by my, and assistance provided by staff, including my boss, the city manager, the members of the audit subcommittee, and of course, the audit team. It's a grueling process. We started in June, preparing to close the books, they have the interim audit. Audit basically goes through August, and then there's financial reporting, so it's good to be, it's good to be done and move on to the next phase of the fiscal world. So thank you to everybody.
All right. Let me open it up then to a public comment, you know, in the audience. Wish to have any comments on the presentation? Seeing none, we'll close that off then, bring it up to the council for discussion or motion. Julie?
I would move that we accept the unmodified opinion issued by the independent auditors on the City of Clayton's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the unmodified opinion as submitted and presented this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? All right. Next item is another action item. I was hoping to have another council member here who actually had requested this item. It's to consider the adoption of a resolution delegating authority to the council, an ad hoc committee approved by the city council on a case-by-case basis, under the Governmental Code Section 21152, subsection C, and 21156, and 21173, to make and certify determinations of city employee disability to the California Public Employees Retirement System, CalPERS, and by separate mayoral action, appoint an initial ad hoc committee to review and make a determination on a pending application for industrial disability retirement. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, this item returns to you as indicated. At the last meeting, staff brought forward a resolution to resolve a inherent conflict between the legislative body of a contracting member of CalPERS to make determinations on disability retirements and industrial disability retirements, the latter being only offered to public safety members under contract. In order for the city council or legislative body to make those determinations on an application, there needs to be evidence and findings, particularly those matters are medical-related or physical-related. And there's a conflict between a city council sitting in a public setting doing that, and an individual's right to privacy under HIPAA laws and so forth. So what other contracting agencies have done typically is they have delegated their authority from the legislative body to their city manager. At the last meeting, Vice Mayor Shuey asked if a different process could be considered, which was establishing a council ad hoc committee to work with the city manager, but the ad hoc committee would make the final determination on behalf of the city council. And subject to a couple of finesses on that, such as the ad hoc committee would need to be appointed by the mayor in a public meeting, and the ad hoc committee, being an ad hoc committee, could only be constituted for a particular industrial disability application, and then would no longer sit. Because if there's an, the reason I mention that is if there's an ongoing subcommittee, that ongoing subcommittee then of the city council would be also subject to public review and public meetings, which would defeat the purpose thereof. So our city attorney, in her office, contacted CalPERS to inquire if that process would be acceptable to CalPERS, and we're bringing the matter back to you. CalPERS's response was, well, that's a little unorthodox, but... CalPERS's response was, well, that, that's a little unorthodox, but we think we could live with that. It could be positive, provided however, as I indicated, that the resolution is adopted that would indicate the mayor would appoint an ad hoc committee at the time an industrial disability application or a disability retirement application were filed, and that the city mayor at, at the time, depending upon the ad hoc committee's, you know, final decision, when that is sent to CalPERS, those two ad hoc committee members have to sign the determination. And accompanying that is a letter from the mayor indicating that in fact, he or she appointed those two individuals to act in that behalf. So we have returned this with two options for you. The first one, of course, is have your city manager do that if you feel more comfortable with the ad hoc committee. Then there's also a resolution in the packet that allows that process to take place. If you decide the latter, which is to establish an ad hoc committee, then I will need to have the mayor by separate action, appoint two of you members to be an ad hoc committee immediately because we have a pending industrial disability retirement application before us. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
So what prompted this at our last meeting was the fact that there is a pending case, correct?
There is a pending application.
Right. And so if we delay taking action tonight on this, what would occur?
Well, we have until January 23rd, in which to inform CalPERS of the local agency's determination on whether to approve that application or not.
So we would not move forward under the process we used to follow?
Well, you, we can't because it, the decision determinations of that would have to be in a public setting.
Right. Okay.
Which violates the, that individual's privacy rights regarding their medical records.
Do you want to make a public comment first?
Any other questions of staff?
No.
No? All right, we'll open this up then to public comment.
I have just a question.
Want to come to the podium, please? Sorry, we need to capture your comments.
I have a question for the city manager relating to the person who is under consideration for the disability. It seems to me that the HIPAA laws allow for the individual to go ahead and waive his privacy rights, his or her privacy rights, if they want to. I may be absolutely wrong. It may be they, they are, they are mandated to maintain privacy, but I think it's an individual's right to do that. And you might want to explore the idea that indeed you could ask the individual if they are averse to being done, had these hearings done under a public setting.
If, I don't know under HIPAA law if that is allowed. I'd allow that to go to the city attorney, but I'm not sure that that's going to result in anything different. I mean, I just look at myself personally or anybody else. No, it's not me, it's a retirement applicant. But, um, you know, why would they waive that privacy right? I, you know, but.
Any other public comment then? Seeing none, we'll close off then the public comment, bring it back to council, get a discussion on how the council would like to proceed with this, take action this evening or... Julie?
Yeah, I, I appreciate having the opportunity to have the discussion and, and explore the two options. I think for all practical purposes, I, I think we all know that we trust our city manager to make wise decisions. I don't think it's necessary for the city council, frankly, to get involved at this level. I think it, it just makes the process more cumbersome. And frankly, I think we should leave it in the hands of the city manager. I, I just think that that's better all the way around. So I would prefer that we adopt the second resolution that's in our packet, leaving it with the city manager.
Another comment, Jim?
I would support that. I don't see any need to get down on the weeds on that.
All right. To you.
I think I'm supportive of that as well, but can I ask city managers, have you done it with the city manager's authorization for quite some time, I assume?
Uh, no, we have not actually. Since I've been here, there've been three industrial disability retirements that have been granted. They were done so at the city council level, but since those time periods, there's been HIPAA and, you know, a bunch of other things that make that proceeding difficult to hold in a public setting.
Okay, thank you. Well, but, but I think the point is to the, to the extent that the city manager needs any expertise, obviously he can then rely on the city manager, I mean, city attorney for any legal advice on HIPAA laws and whatnot. And I think that's probably a better process than having an ad hoc committee that could change and having all those council members get acquainted with HIPAA laws, which I'm not, certainly not familiar with. So I, I would be supportive of keeping it with the, or having it be with the city manager as well.
And I looked at and read obviously the opinion and recommendations, and it did sound as though most public, California public agencies have been relying on this type of process with the delegation to a city manager type position. And that seems to have been how most of the agencies are dealing with this issue. It's much more quick or more efficient, does tend to protect privacy a bit more, and because of that sensitivity, I think that is probably how we should proceed with this motion as well.
With that, I would.
I was just going to indicate, and I think the reason for that is because when, particularly when it gets into the arena of industrial disability retirement, usually the city manager or his HR office closely related are already involved in the industrial nature of that injury. And so we are informed of the medical reports ahead of time. We're monitoring that and watching how that takes place. Just for Vice Mayor Shuey's defense, I think what he was saying also is he didn't have any objections for me personally, you know, but he just didn't know what a city manager might, you know, down the road be able to do something, you know, nefarious supposedly. So.
Okay.
With that, I would move adoption of the resolution of the city council of the City of Clayton, delegating authority to its city manager under government code section 21152C, 21156, and 21173, to make and certify determinations of city employee disability to the California Public Employees Retirement System. Second?
Been moved and seconded then? All in favor of Julie's motion? It basically is following the recommended procedure here that most cities are following and delegating this to our city manager. All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Okay. So I will be signing the second resolution, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. All right. Then with that action, I'm going, first, do we have any council items? The council wants to propose for discussion at a future meeting? Seeing none, then I'm going to recess this city council meeting and move to the Clayton Financing Authority meeting. So the actual city council meeting is hereby adjourned, and I will call to order the Clayton Financing Authority. And for roll call, we show that the council is present with the exception of Council Vice Mayor Shuey. And move, we have no closed session, so I'll move to consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and approved. We approve the consent calendar as proposed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, no one opposed? Next item would be public comment. This would be for non-agenda items dealing with the Clayton Financing Authority. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close that off. We have no action items, any board items for this particular financing authority. All right, seeing none then, I will adjourn the Clayton Financing Authority meeting and go back to the city council meeting. But actually, our next item with the city council is to move into closed session. So I do need to ask that the audience allow us to meet in private?
You're going to read that?
You are, read the government code section?
Yes. It is the government code section 54957, the Public Employee Annual Performance Evaluation, position title of city manager, and governmental code section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Agency Designated Representatives, myself, Mayor Hayden, and Vice Mayor Shuey, unrepresented employee, city manager. And I will then report out from the closed session. All right? Thank you.